Good evening, I'm Glenn Mills, ABC 4. Proud to bring you a week of debates for Salt Lake City Council. Tonight, we feature the race in District 1. That district running from I-15 and 9th West to approximately 8525 West, and from I-80 on the south to 2500 north. It includes the Rose Park and Jordan Meadows neighborhoods, the airport also in this district, as are the fairgrounds. It would also hold the new state prison when it is completed. There are three candidates running for this district, and they include Richard David McPherson Barnes and Victoria Petro Eschler. The third candidate, Blake Perez, was invited, but he did refuse to come in and participate tonight. We're going to start this debate with opening statements that will last 1 minute and 30 seconds. Now, prior to the debate, it was determined that Mr. Barnes will have the first opening statement. Mr. Barnes, we turn it over to you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the debate here on Channel 4. My name is Richard David McPherson Barnes, and I'm running for Salt Lake City Council here in District 1. We appreciate you joining us tonight and studying the candidates and the issues. Tonight's debate will be taking questions from various sources, and we hope we give you answers that will give you some insight into what our vision is of Salt Lake City. And I hope you'll, of course, I hope you'll vote for me in the ranked system voting, choice number one, Richard David McPherson Barnes. And here's Victoria as well. Why vote for me? I've been a resident of Rose Park for the last 28 years, since 1993. I've worked hard. I'm a working person like many of you. I break rocks with a sledgehammer for a living, but it's a special rock that I send throughout the world, museums to provide money through their gift shop sales, things like that. I've also represented the Republican Party and as legislative chair for District 23 for well over a decade. Good to see you all. Hope you're all having a great evening. Thank you.
All right, we will now have an opening statement from Ms. Petro Eschler. You have a minute 30.
Thank you, ABC 4 Utah, The Other Side Academy, the Pioneer Park Coalition, the Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce, to my opponent, Mr. Richard. And thank you, Glenn, for having us here tonight. Hi, District 1. I am so thrilled to be running to represent us at the city level. I moved to Utah in 2013, and almost as soon as we entered the valley, I knew District 1 was my home. I love where I live with a passion that I cannot describe. I grew up in Army Brat, in Europe, all over the East Coast, and this is where I've chosen to lay down roots. Now, I see my home community at the apex of a changing landscape. We know that Utah and Salt Lake City are going to grow immensely. Our population is set to double in 20 years. As we grow, we need visionary leaders who aren't afraid to show up and do hard things to make sure that as we grow, it is strategic, it is sustainable. And most of all, in our district, that is responsive to the amazing people who have built this place that I now get the privilege to call home. I raise my three children here. I wake up. I take them to a Title I school here. I run a small nonprofit, and I go to sleep here. And I cannot wait to get to work on behalf of my neighbors and residents in District 1.
Thank you. The format of this debate is as followed. Each candidate will have 1 minute 30 seconds to respond to our questions. After each candidate has had their opportunity to do that, we will then allow for 30 seconds of rebuttal time where they can address the statements the other candidate made. Rebuttal time will be replaced with a follow-up question at my discretion throughout the night. At the end of the debate, each candidate will have time for a 1-minute closing statement. The questions we want to make clear have come from us right here in the ABC 4 newsroom, and the candidates have not had access to these questions beforehand. So let's go ahead and get started. We're going to start with the city's unsheltered population and the issues they face on a daily basis. It is something we have seen spread throughout the entire city, even the valley for that matter. But no doubt, your district has certainly shouldered its fair share of the issues. So here's what we would like to hear from you, the candidates, tonight. How would you prioritize services for the homeless? What is most important as you're doing that? Ms. Petro Eschler, we begin with you, and you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. In the mid-2000s, I was the only Spanish-speaking case manager in Durham County, North Carolina. During this time, I gained a vast amount of experience and knowledge about how difficult this issue is to address. However, I know that we are resourceful people who can do it. I want us to start with a Housing First model that marries itself to case management. We know that Housing First alone is a recipe for just exacerbating certain issues, but married to case management, it can work. We're seeing some really great options starting to emerge from the Other Side Small Village. However, they're really clear about what they do, so we need to empower other organizations that will deal with family homelessness, that will deal with sex offender homelessness. We need a three-year crisis management plan that will include things like protected camping so that we can build the infrastructure and partnerships. We need to have a strong needs assessment conducted so that we can, in turn, label what is within the city's purview and the city's capacity. And then we need to make clear, decisive, and unwavering asks of other municipalities, of the county, and of the state. And we need to create strong understandings of how we, together, are going to be addressing this problem. Public-private partnerships and cross-agency partnerships will be pivotal.
Okay. We're now going to turn to Mr. Barnes. The time is yours. Talk about prioritizing services for the unsheltered. You have a minute 30.
Thank you. This is a problem that... The problem is, we call it a problem. These are children of God. These are our friends and neighbors. All of us are just one... Many of us, I'll say, are just one paycheck, one serious accident away from being homeless ourselves. Quit treating the homeless like they're a bunch of termites or something. We... Most of them would be happy just to get a tent of their own and not have the police harassing them and forcing them to move every few days. The problem is, as I see it, the only places they... You see them in the parking strips because they're not allowed to be anywhere else, and homelessness is treated as a crime. Yes, there are other crimes, and that is a problem, but we can solve that. One of the big things I see is in Great Britain, they have bed and breakfast. You go throughout Scotland, they're everywhere. Anyone can open up a bed and breakfast and then have up to three rooms, six persons per night, and the Queen doesn't charge many taxes. Another excellent example is the backpackers that are cheap have a common kitchen, small room. You provide your own blankets down in New Zealand. These are the low-cost solutions that will get people into something.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, we're going to have to move on. In lieu of rebuttal 30 seconds, I'd like to ask a follow-up question here on this issue that each one of you will have 30 seconds to respond to. The approach that the city is taking right now, is it effective and sufficient, or does more need to be done? Ms. Petro Eschler, we start with you.
This issue might be new for other parts of Salt Lake City, but since Operation Rio Grande, our district has been shouldering an undue burden, and our voices have gone largely unheeded. By and large, the status quo has not worked for District 1. I don't impugn any intentions. I think everyone has good ones. But our voice has not been centric as residents of District 1, and that has got to figure in all future plans. Our residents' voices must be heard.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, you believe that what the city is doing at this point is sufficient. Are they on the right track?
I need to say that I haven't studied the issue enough to know for sure. I do see a lot of people camping down by the Jordan River. They used to camp in Pioneer Park. We had 400 beds at the Road Home Shelter that were obliterated. They just leveled it in December a couple of years ago, and so it gave them no place to go. They had... Before that was built, there were different homeless facilities throughout the valley. Then they said, "Oh, we're going to move everything by Rio Grande."
Mr. Barnes, I'm sorry, you've gone over your time. We need to move on so that we can stay on track here with our timing of this debate. We are going to stay on this topic, though, of the unsheltered. We have seen more and more of late in the city, people living in their vehicles, lining up along roads within the city limits. Talk about this issue and what you would do to help address that. Mr. Barnes, you get the first minute 30.
That sounds pretty sad. I think we need to maybe... Would it hurt to have porta-potties, trash dumpsters available for them, maybe a little running water and power? They live in their vehicle because that's the last place they have. Let's get them... Let's show a little compassion, get them what they need. Homelessness is not a permanent situation. It shouldn't be. Like I say, many of them are one paycheck away from it. To get a two-bedroom apartment, you can pay $1,200 to $1,500 a month. And my dad, he's on social security, with two doctor degrees, has only $1,300 a month. It's easy to do the math. It's... That's why they're homeless, the high cost of housing that they're facing. So it could be any one of us. They're not necessarily... Oh, as they're portrayed, on drugs or mentally... Have mental problems of some sort. If you were out there in fear, like they are, you'd probably have some mental issues as well. So what... I wish I had all the answers. I don't claim to, but I'm going to... If you elect me as your city for city council, District 1, I intend to spend a lot of time listening, and that's pretty much it. There's a lot better ideas than I have.
Thank you for your response. And then we turn now to Ms. Petro Eschler. People who live in their vehicles along city streets, how would you address that? A minute 30.
I agree, this is a crisis that people would have to turn to their vehicles for housing. And as Mr. Barnes rightly pointed out, we've known for a long time that we're 300 beds short once we decentralized the homelessness services from the Rio Grande area. I am proposing that we need a three-year homelessness crisis management plan. And as part of it, we need protected camping for RVs and for vehicles as well. The city can register. We can regulate things like no minors being there or whatever we need to do to ensure safety. But if we know who is where, number one, that allows us to offer services and to offer long-term source problem solutions. Number two, it gives us the time we need to build the infrastructure that we have failed to build so far. And we know that this model can work. The city can develop the private-public-private partnerships necessary to do this. In Seattle, they've worked with local churches in order to help facilitate some of this. But while I empathize terribly with the people who find themselves in this situation, I also empathize with the business owners, with the people trying to go about their daily lives in the middle of this chaos. We must bring order to this issue, and having a three-year crisis management plan where we can know who is where and they can be in peace is absolutely the best policy.
Yeah, I want to dig into more of that. I'm glad you brought that up. Let's talk about that a little bit more. The local business owners, residents who live in these neighborhoods who are concerned about public safety issues that arise with camping. What would you say to them as part of your plan to help protect their safety as well? Mr. Barnes, 30 seconds.
Why are they all here in Salt Lake City? Why are the rules different here than in the other communities that surround us? Maybe they need to shoulder the responsibility too. And maybe some camps that are... Where they can have their own leaders, their own rules that they elect, and know what it's like to be homeless. Figure out rules, what gets you to stay there, what gets you needing to move on sadly once again.
Thank you for your response, Ms. Petro Eschler. If you were talking right now to one of those business owners or a resident, what would you say to them?
I would say I hear you. I would say that you are right to be frustrated. I would say that you are part of a team that needs to be powerful together, that needs to communicate about hard things with each other. I am a both-and kind of person, so when I was at the Madison Park homelessness meeting the other day, and the business community wanted to propose fencing it off, I asked for them to remember our citizens. We should not be creating false polarities here where we pit residents against businesses, against the city. We need to be a team to address this.
Okay, we're going to shift now to public safety on the minds of many within Utah's capital city and even beyond that. It's been well documented, some of the issues the Salt Lake City Police Department has been facing. One of those is it's just flat-out understaffed right now. How would you, as a member of city council, help to recruit new officers? Ms. Petro Eschler, you are first. You have a minute 30.
The city council just recently commissioned an audit that brought forward some very urgent issues that need to be addressed. I think all issues need to be data-oriented in their solutions, and we have a great platform with that audit that was just created. In my own experience, speaking both with police leadership and with those who find themselves on the front lines, there seems to be a disconnect. And just anyone who's run an organization knows, when you have a disconnect between those who sit in the offices and those who are in the trenches, that is not good for your organizational psychology or accomplishing your mission. We need to do an industrial psychological analysis and work to create a comprehensive plan for creating a cohesive police department. And then finally, I really think that we need a dedicated recruiter. I was part of a listening committee for the Racial Equity and Policing Commission, and I learned that we haven't had a dedicated recruiter in the police department, despite the fire department having one. And I think if we really want to take seriously finding, retaining, and engaging high-quality police people who can do the work that our capital city demands, we have to dedicate ourselves to recruiting and then also the cultivation that will come from the industrial psychological assessment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barnes. We turn back to you now. Obviously, when you're short-staffed as a police department, it leads to many other problems, response times and others. What would you do about recruiting more quality people to become police officers?
In 2020, there was a movement, the "Defund the Police" situation. This was a horrible, horrible mistake, resulted in fires, destruction of statuary and other art objects throughout the nation as an organized effort to destroy the government of the United States of America. That's my belief. That's what I saw, especially when they attacked our Utah State Capitol building. In general, what we need is, as Ms. Eschler points out, enough police to respond in a timely manner. Even before 2020, in our neighborhoods in District 1, Rose Park where I live, unless it was a crime of violence, police weren't responding at all because they would arrest someone, and they immediately had to let someone else out. So true criminals were spending very little time in prison. This needs to... We do need... Yes, let's recruit more officers. Let's ask the ones that got fired or laid off with the "Defund the Police" movement, let's ask them to come back. Hopefully, we'll get them back. My main platform is "Back the Blue." Thank you.
We're going to move on, but we're actually going to come back to that issue, so we'll be able to get more into that. Ms. Petro Eschler, 30 seconds to respond to what you just heard from your opponent.
So I think there's a kernel of truth in everything that we hear. And in the "Defund the Police" movement, while the marketing was terrible, and should that phrase probably not be heard again, the truth is that for the past couple decades, if we have a problem, we throw a police person at it, whether it's a mental health crisis, a domestic violence crisis, a homelessness issue. We make our police do too much. We need to assess their jobs and offer them the resources and support so that what we ask is doable.
Okay. Mr. Barnes, you have the final 30 seconds on this issue.
I totally agree with what Ms. Eschler has to say. Yeah, let's find other means other than an armed officer to address things if we can. But when an armed officer goes out there, they need to know that they have the full backing of we, the people. We are the militia. Let's do the ride-alongs. Let's be part of the solution. Let's be the eyes and ears of the police so that we can all live safely. Thank you.
We're going to dig into this a little bit more, specifically on this issue of defunding the police. No doubt about it, it's been a polarizing issue within the city, state, and even across the country. So what I would like to know is, first, what that statement means to you, and how would you address it if elected? Mr. Barnes, you will be first on this question. A minute 30.
Thank you. It means that violent crime has gone up immensely in the last few months over what we managed to do previously and far above what it was in 2019. What people need are jobs, the ability to earn a living. If you want to run your own business, don't have our government stand in the way, be helpful to it. During COVID, my business, they closed all the museums. So where I'd been earning quite a good living, suddenly, I sold less than $2,000 worth of merchandise in the last part of 2020. But other than the general disbursements from the federal government, I did not take any funds. Just get government out of our way as much as possible. That's what we need. Let you and me make our decisions. Freedom to run a business, freedom to work where we can, sometimes freedom to fail sadly. But the choice should be ours. That's what, to me, America is all about. Thank you.
Ms. Petro Eschler, talk about what "Defund the Police" means to you, and how do you bridge the divide with those that don't agree with you?
I think "Defund the Police" is a poor marketing slogan, but there are lots of bits of information from the people who purport it that we should be taking away. We should be assessing the scope of work. We should not inadvertently cause police to take on work that they don't need to. We need to acknowledge that there are communities that do have a fear response to police, and maybe police aren't the right answer for everything there. We need to be working with police voices, with community voices, to determine how to make this the most effective use of police energy and to maximize community response to them. We need to be developing supplemental strategies for the work that the police are doing so that... I mean, maybe they don't need to be writing parking tickets. I'm not sure, because I need to see the data. I am data-oriented on these sorts of solutions. I really believe... I run a small nonprofit, and before COVID, I asked the police to send officers to my program, to meet my kids, to know that if my kids were on the street and going in their pocket, it was likely for a piece of rosin for their violin rather than anything else. When we return police to our communities and communities to our police, beautiful things can happen, and we can get away from these polarized narratives. I think engaging with my neighbors, engaging with police officers, engaging with the communities who live in fear is the strategy for dealing with this. We have to stop making a political talking point, and we have to remember the humanity of all parties involved here.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, you brought up a point in your conversation, your answer to this question, that I want to hit on a little bit more. You said you need to get government out of the way and let individuals make the decisions that are best for them. One of the biggest things we've seen come up from that this year would be masks in schools. I want to give each of you 30 seconds. We'll begin with you, Mr. Barnes. Would you have supported the Salt Lake City school requirement to have masks in school, and why? You have 30 seconds.
That's a tough issue. It seems like Salt Lake City has a lot more COVID than other areas of the state. Some areas have had very few deaths throughout that. I think local officials need to be allowed to do what they need to do. I sure hope we don't end up like Australia where they're finding massive things.
Would you have voted for the mask mandate? Yes or no?
I don't have sufficient data to know one way or another.
Okay, Ms. Petro Eschler, what are your thoughts on that?
I have three elementary-age students who go to a public school, and I was so thankful when all three who are not age-eligible for the vaccine were protected by the mask mandate. I would have voted to support it. I think it follows the Utah ethos of local control because, as Mr. Barnes rightly points out, our population-dense Salt Lake City requires different interventions than elsewhere. And I am very thankful that the city took that step to protect my children and others.
All right, let's talk about equity. Moving on to that, your district home to a sizable population that identifies as Latino. Do you think there is enough diversity representation in Salt Lake City government? And if not, how would you address the issue if elected? Ms. Petro Eschler, we begin with you for a minute 30.
I am the answer to this issue. I am the proud granddaughter of very brave people who came here from Panama and Cuba and a few from Italy. And I also have a consultancy that works with organizations on issues of inclusion, diversity, equity, and access. This topic gets treated in a polarizingly political way, and it gets treated like warm fuzzies that we can't measure. But there are strategic, systematic things that can be done to promote equity. The first step is centering the voices. We inadvertently move to models of trying to save one another instead of just hearing each other and remembering our humanity and centering that in these conversations. As a proud member of the local Latino community, my pledge is to listen. And to listen to those who don't understand why it's important to the Latino community that I'm Latina. We're not here to take over. I'm not here to subvert. We are here to build a true equity, something that hasn't existed before. But with my perspective as a Latina, I promise, good things are coming for all of us. A true equity is something where we all share equally and in a way that benefits us. So I'm enthusiastic to be an elected Latina in a district that's more than half Latino. Thank you.
Mr. Barnes, we turn to you on the topic of equity in government. If you were elected to this position, how would you represent the minority population within your district?
Mujeres y hombres bienvenidos. Yo hablo español también. I actually listed myself as Latino on the latest census for 2020 because I've been... I've learned Spanish. Six years at least at high school was Sterling Scholar at Vumont. Go Vikings! I also have Viking and Scottish ancestry. I'm just a European mongrel. Here in Rose Park and District 1, at Rose Park Elementary alone, there are over 110 languages spoken. It's just not just Latinos. We've got a lot of Pacific Islanders. I love you guys. So just be nice to everyone. One of our favorite restaurants is called Chubby's. Been run by Pedro, and he hires Noel and many others to help out. Just enjoy a good meal. Go if you want a good buffet. There's a good place, 45th and State, called Paradise Buffet. You see the whole world there. We get along there. Generally, I think we get along pretty well in Rose Park. Just be nice to each other, hire everybody. And I'm really disappointed that only three of us chose to run for Salt Lake City Council. Hopefully, get more.
We're going to have to end that topic there. We do want to let you know we're about halfway through this debate now. And Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd. Ballots are being mailed out as we speak. You should start to get them at your home this week. This year, the race, this race that we're talking about here and many others, are being determined by ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting is a system where voters can use their ballot to not only vote for their preferred candidate, but also indicate their backup choices through a process of elimination. Once one candidate gets more than 50% of the vote, that candidate is then declared the winner. Okay, now we're going to get back to our debate, and we're going to shift gears into housing and development, a big issue not only for your district, but really statewide. So let's talk about how you would plan to address the high rental and housing costs within your district. Mr. Barnes, we begin with you, a minute 30.
This is a very tough subject. As I said before, what people are not getting for social security can be pretty much eaten up just by the rent for a small apartment. up just by the rent for a small apartment. Doesn't leave much for food. I would like to start by eliminate the sales tax on food. That would add a bit more because every dollar worth of food, basically you have to earn about $2 to pay for it. Housing, we're in a wonderful area here. People have started discovering the West Side, what a great place it is. We're right close to Salt Lake International Airport where you can go anywhere in the world in a few hours. Lots of flights all day long, plenty of employment available out there. You know, we've got things we want, some we might not want so much, maybe the prison. You've got the inland port. We need at least a representative from District One on the inland port. But as far as the housing costs, the only fair way to handle it sadly is let the free market prevail. A lot of young professionals are discovering Rose Park because the houses were small houses built just after World War II with minimal space. So it works for one, maybe two or three people.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Petro Echler, your thoughts on high rental and housing costs in your district?
I am having to take my kids increasingly to other areas to visit their friends who, whose families have had to leave our neighborhood because of this issue. It's really sad because the history of our area is that the Rose was built as a home for blue-collar workers returning from war. This is our heritage that we're sacrificing when we don't work to make sure that there are mixed income, mixed-use strategies for our development. The other day, I was sitting with a local developer who says, "Victoria, we want to help the city reach its priorities, including the affordable housing, but we don't know how best to interact with the city. We don't have the formats." I think we need to be inviting developers to the table. We have tools like small-area plans that we can use to target development in a very strategic and specific way so that we can create income, we can create housing for all income points throughout our district. We also know that the RDA, the redevelopment agency, is going to be pivotal in this. And so we should be looking at leveraging our city resources and assets in order to incentivize those who would help us reach the city priority of having affordable and mixed income. I will always be resistant to a concentration of affordable or deeply affordable housing in any one area due to the long-term implications, but a mixed-income strategy, a mixed-use strategy absolutely will benefit our district, the city, and the residents.
Mr. Barnes, 30 seconds to respond to what your opponent just said.
Once again, let the free market prevail. The RDA, I would get rid of it as soon as possible, if possible, if I am elected. Otherwise, I'm sorry, you voted for somebody else. That's just been a horrible thing to, it's so horrible to take somebody else's private property to give it to someone else for private purposes. It's bad enough if you take it for a roadway or something.
Your 30 seconds are up. Ms. Petro Echler, your thoughts specifically on this idea of let the free market prevail? 30 seconds.
We nudge the free market all the time in this country, whether it's subsidies for farmers or other things that we do. Nudging the free market in the direction of ensuring that our sanitation workers, our police officers, our teachers, our firefighters, those people who got up during COVID and kept us going by stocking our grocery store shelves and working at the meatpacking plants, ensuring that they have housing that is affordable to them is a good use of our authority to nudge the free market.
Okay, we're going to stay on the subject of development and talk more specifically about something that has been brought up already to this point, and that is the state prison, the new state prison. It's going to be out in your area, just to the west of the airport. Ms. Petro Echler, 90 seconds to talk about what you would like to see surrounding, as surrounding the new state prison as that development moves forward.
Yeah, so this prison is one of the reasons why those of us who live in District One can become disillusioned a little bit. It felt like it was kind of foisted on us. There were other areas of the state who wanted it, who didn't get it, and now we're dealing with it. However, my neighbors are amazing at making beauty from ashes. And so I wholeheartedly look forward to what we're going to do. There are models in other municipalities where inmates learn skills that are rehabilitative and restorative that they can use after they leave. And in one, I can't remember the exact location, they actually had a diner where the inmates learned everything about restaurant management, cooking, and all of that, that were skills that they could use when they left. I would love to see District One take advantage of this opportunity and create a true restorative justice model and to create economic opportunity out of this project that we weren't sure that we wanted. I have really grave concerns about the environmental impact of this. We're desiccating an irreplaceable natural resource in the shores of our Great Salt Lake, and I do want to see an active and robust, ongoing vigilance around that. But my neighbors are creative, and as a city council person, I will harness that creativity and be responsive to make sure that this isn't a burden, it's an opportunity for us.
Mr. Barnes, your thoughts on what you'd like to see happening around the new state prison? You have a minute thirty.
The new Utah State Prison is located in what a geologist such as myself refers to as the shake-and-bake zone. We're at the bottom of a frying pan, flat bottom, high mountains to the edges of us, so we basically live on the edges. The mosquito problem alone, I would call cruel and unusual punishment, especially with things like West Nile virus. I've run for state senate and legislature. One of my favorite things was a tour of the old Utah State Prison where, in a population of about 2,500 at the time, all but about 124 had managed to figure out how to stay out of their cells most of the day. If you've sat on a chair or used other furniture in a state facility, you know, schools, et cetera, it was probably built at the Utah State Prison. They provide fish for Walmart. All kinds of industries take place out there. They are learning skills and often very valuable skills. I think it's a great idea to have the diner and other things that my opponent has suggested. I think there's a lot where we can work together. Hopefully, we will. Hopefully, laws will be few and we have as few prisoners to worry about as possible.
All right. Ms. Petro Echler, I do want to give you 30 seconds to respond to what you heard from your opponent.
I, I do want to amplify what Mr. Barnes said. The location of the prison is troublesome. I worry that even if we are able to abate mosquitoes, those noose-hem flies are not going to go anywhere, and I worry that our inmates won't have any outdoor time at certain points in the year. But I do want to amplify what I said earlier, that my district is wonderful at taking challenges and turning them into opportunities and maximizing the potential, and I know we'll do that with this.
Mr. Barnes, when you talk about maximizing potential, your thoughts, the final 30 seconds.
Like she says, well, basically, when you, life throws you lemons, make lemonade out of it. Come on, apply, get jobs out there. Hopefully, somebody out there will be the ones, will be the guards that will, and instructors that will turn the people around so they don't need to return, so they get decent jobs, so they can afford housing, food, with no sales tax on it. And hopefully, we'll reduce the property tax by a great deal. I've been paying twice what I was just a few years ago.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to turn now to another controversial issue in the northwest quadrant of the capital city, and that is the inland port. My question to you, both the candidates, is do you support the inland port and explain why or why not? Mr. Barnes, you lead us off with a minute thirty.
Salt Lake City is the center of the crossroads of the West. It's a great place to do trucking. Amazon has chosen to put a big new facility in North Salt Lake. UPS has a facility here, many other companies. In our district, we, we have places like L3, also the Utah National Guard Base, the big airport, lots of planes all day long, in and out of there. Maybe these are cleaner industries than some other industries could be. Should it be taxpayer-funded is the big thing. Should it be taking money from other things that need the money as the state has forced on us? The first thing we need is a seat for District One on the board, if it is a fact right now. Also, the environmental concerns. Once again, shake-and-bake zone. It should be at their expense, their risk, not the taxpayers. Let's make it totally private and including the insurance and then see what develops there. There's been a lot of buildings built along 2200 West, west of I-215. I worry about those.
Okay, we're going to have to move on. Ms. Petro Echler, your thoughts on the inland port? Do you support it and why? You have a minute thirty.
I support that area of land being used for economic development. I support the potential job creation, but I am perennially frustrated at the intentional obfuscation of real data. I am fortunate to have the support of Senator Lou Cescamia, who very passionately and well advocated for a bill that ensures that we'll have accurate data regarding this project. And that data has not been made readily available to our residents. In fact, the other day, there was a meeting about the inland port. And as someone who's really engaged in my district, I had a hard time finding out when it was. It was during a workday. I was privileged to be able to attend it. We need to be following up as a city with that bill that Senator Cescamia passed to make sure that we have data about everything from the environmental impacts, the stress on the infrastructure that it will cause. We need information about what sorts of jobs are going to be created and how many of those jobs are going to go to our residents. We cannot provide entry-level jobs to our residents in import management. We need jobs to exist beyond the first five years of building the port. We need investments in our community from those who will profit off of our area. So while I'm in favor of the economic development possibilities, this particular project has been intentionally stripping our citizens of voices.
Mr. Barnes, 30 seconds to address that. Have citizens' voices been stripped in this process?
From what I've heard from people who've come to me, apparently it has. Let's get the seat back for District One specifically. Otherwise, I agree with what Ms. Echler has to say about that. Transparency is very, very important in this one, and let's make sure it benefits and check out the environmental problems created by it.
Ms. Petro Echler, your final 30 seconds on that issue.
Yeah, I'm not sure what else I have to add. I do support that District One should have a seat on the inland port authority, but we've also had other citizen and community-oriented voices stripped off of that with little information as to why, and there's little recourse for following up on that. Our voices have to be central. It's our children's lungs on the line, and we need to be certain that what we're hearing in terms of data and what we're able to be heard on is clear.
Okay, we're actually going to stay on this and dig into this a little bit more because, as you know, your predecessor was one of two Salt Lake City officials on the inland port authority board. Assuming you were to continue with that role, how would you work with the board in representing your district and what you would like to see come of that area? Ms. Petro Echler, we begin with you.
I am a data collector and I am data-oriented. I will not engage in any sort of personality conflict or anything that is a distraction from the issues. My priority in this entire process is the health, the safety, the security of my neighbors and to make sure our voice is centered. So in having aims like that, I don't have to worry about if I like them, if I agree with them on all the points, but we will need to understand the consequences and to control them so that our neighborhood, which already bears a disproportionate burden of poor air quality, a disproportionate burden of 18-wheelers running through our neighborhood, that our neighborhood doesn't have any more of a disproportionate burden placed on it. I am a consensus builder. I'm a nonprofit professional. I understand how to diplomatically engage and to convey a mission to all sorts of stakeholders, and I will use that skill. I'm a mom. There cannot be anything more important to me than ensuring that my children get to adulthood safely, healthfully, and I want that for my neighbors too. With those as my guiding principles, the protection of my neighborhood, the understanding of the data and responding to it, and the making sure that our voice is centered, I don't see where there's room for conflict or any sort of deviation.
Mr. Barnes, we turn to you now. If you were to have a seat on the board, how would you work with board members who may not see eye to eye with you?
I would, I've got two ears to listen with and then one mouth to speak. If I am on the inland port authority board, I'll spend a lot of time listening and then try to put input that will help to protect the needs of District One. Far too often, we're the sacrifice zone. All the sewage comes down at our sewage treatment plant. They want, they chose to put the prison where they did because it's one of the least Republican areas of the state. I'm the Republican Chair for District 23, have been for over a decade, and I know a lot of these people and can actually talk to them. I see them on occasion. So at least I can be there and try to meet our needs. Also, as a geologist, I, I love the environment. My goal was to be a park ranger, an interpreter, one to teach people about it. Let's protect City Creek. That's a big one. The others try to take our water from City Creek that rightfully belongs to we, the people of Salt Lake City, and I will particularly look out for the interests of District One. I would also love to serve on the airport board.
Okay, we're going to shift now to air quality. We all know how important of an issue this can be. For me, the candidates, I'd like to know what you believe the worst contributor to our poor air quality is in your district and what would you do to address that if elected? Mr. Barnes, we begin with you, a minute thirty on this one.
Sadly, I haven't been privileged to get the data of what is the worst polluter. I do, I did grow up in this area, the Salt Lake Valley. I remember back in the old days in the 1960s, I didn't even know the Stansberry Range existed beyond Antelope Island because the only thing I could see if it was a clear day, so I thought, was Antelope Island due to all the pollution coming from the refinery at the north end of the Ocker Mountains with Kinnicott. I'm really glad to see how much better it is now than it was. We hear that cars are a problem, but I sure like having gasoline and being able to drive. Yes, you can do things like public transportation if you want to go where they go. If I'm, if I've got groceries, I need a car to drive them home with. If I'm hauling 300 pounds of rocks, I need my car there. Let's make it easy to drive around as well as working on public transportation options, including things like Uber. Why not give everybody a pass and you can go where you feel like it? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Petro Echler, your plan for improving the air within your district?
Our district sits at an unfortunate confluence. We are covered in PM 2.5 from Highway 15 to the east, Highway 80 to the south, Highway 215 to the west. We all love the new airport, but it's an increased-capacity airport, which means increased air pollution. We have a number of refineries that exist and that blow directly in our area, and we have an intense amount of building, which is causing debris and dust and all sorts of pollutions. There is so much that we can do. As we develop, we should be engaging with developers, and by the way, we have local developers who are nationally renowned for their ability to do so in a way that is green and sustainable. And we need to be setting standards for how we develop to ensure that not only the long-term projects are green, but then also that the process itself is. I do want to reduce our reliance on individual cars. We know that's a problem. However, I'm very tired of the narrative that would have the blue-collar workers who sacrificed their bodies during who sacrificed their bodies during their careers having to walk miles and wait for endless hours at stations for the public transit to serve them. We need a UTA and a partnership from the city with the UTA that builds it and then my neighbors will come. I am not willing to say that our families who are going two and three and four jobs have to sacrifice their car until we make it feasible for them.
Okay, we're going to move on to one more question, but we do have to limit this response to 45 seconds. As you know, we are experiencing historic drought in the state of Utah. How would you encourage your district to use less water if this drought continues? We will do 45 seconds each for this one. Ms. Petro Eschler, you're first.
The most logical thing to me seems to be to revisit some green ordinances. Out at the new Amazon plant, we have Kentucky bluegrass planted. That takes an inordinate amount of water. I think returning to native plants is an excellent first step in revisiting what we're, what we're planting in the area. The Flip the Strip Initiative is absolutely brilliant, not only in the fact that it provides education, but also that it helps us manage our resources. I also think there's a public education component that we could be engaging in. In my neighborhood, we're all trying to survive and trying to make it to the next day. Understanding what we can do is important and some public education could reap big ROI.
Mr. Barnes, your plan for action on the drought? You have 45 seconds.
I agree with Ms. Eschler. Native plants could be a big part of it. There's also kind of a bead sort of thing that will help keep the water in so that we can have our plants. Plants are very important. They reduce the temperature, clean out CO2 emissions. So I really, I really, I'm, I like rocks, but not as parking strips. I'd a lot rather have native plants. Astros do quite well in our neighborhood, the little purple daisies you see all around. They like to grow. Let, let the people decide. Most of us in our neighborhood have very small yards and we're not the ones using a lot of the water. But others are. Be respectful of your neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, we're now at the end of this debate. Each candidate has one minute in time for a closing statement. It was determined before the debate, the first closing statement would go to Richard Barnes. Mr. Barnes.
Well, thank you for listening. If you've, you're still tuned this long, it shows you care. I, like I say, well over a decade, I've been the Republican Chair for Legislative District 23. Usually, when I can't convince somebody else to run, then I run. This time, I thought it was very important, especially back the blue. The police are not our enemies. They're our friend. And they need to be that way, yes. Hold them accountable. But in the end, I want our officers to go home at night. Our firefighters are also heroes. There's, our community is full of heroes. The landscape architect for the LDS Church, Peter Lassig, he lived there. Keith Steppen, who built a lot of the temples, he lives there still. God bless y'all. God bless America. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. The last one minute now goes to Victoria Petro Eschler.
I'd like to once again thank ABC for Utah, The Other Side Academy, the Pioneer Park Coalition, the Salt Lake Chamber, Mr. Richard, and you Glenn, for having me this evening. I'm going to speak directly to my neighbors from District One. I am asking for you to rank me number one on your ballot. I am prepared for this by my nature. I come from a family where public service is what we do. I have known since I was young that I must turn around and show my community thanks through public service. I am prepared for this by my nurture. I have a master's in public policy. I am able, I have run a nonprofit. I'm ready to do this. And I'm prepared by you, my neighbors. I have listened to you. I know what we're facing. And we all know that what is coming for our district now is too important to ignore. You need someone who shows up, someone who'll answer the hard questions, and someone who will return home to listen to you again. Thank you.
And we would like to thank both of you for being here tonight and engaging in this important conversation for prospective voters within your district. We would like to remind you that Election Day is November 2nd. This week, we here at ABC for hosting several debates for the Salt Lake City Council seats up for election. We're doing that because the government closest to you is the one that really impacts your life. And we're hoping that you will get engaged and take a role in this election. Tomorrow at 7:00 right here on the CW 30, we'll have candidates for Salt Lake City District Two in our studio to debate the issues that are most important to you, the voter. District Two is one of the most diverse parts of the city. It includes the Glendale and Poplar Grove neighborhoods. This debate, we do want to remind you, was brought to you in part by The Other Side Academy, the Pioneer Park Coalition, and the Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce. Remember, watch for those ballots. They should start to arrive in your mailbox this week. And we want to thank you for joining us tonight. And we hope to see you back here at 10 o'clock.